Our story began in 1991. Over time, the mortgage industry has experienced many changes, but our core values here at CIS have always remained the same: Character, integrity, and service. You don't need to be a mortgage expert to get a great financial plan. You just need to work with one. Our focus and dedication have allowed us to help thousands of families reach their dream of homeownership. Whether it be refinancing your current home, buying a manufactured home, or purchasing investment property, we have a product for you. We invite you to find out more by visiting our website at CISHomeLoans.com or like us on Facebook. CIS Home Loans: Mortgage loans made simple. Equal housing lender.
Appreciate each of you that's come tonight for me. I hope everyone had a great Super Bowl and a great Groundhog Day yesterday. According to date to what we have today, I hope the Groundhog was right on them. Felt so good outside today beyond me. To be thankful for these nice warm days during the winter. Later on in the meeting, we'll be changing our meeting date for the second meeting of the month due to a holiday. And we'll certify that a bit. But we'll mention that our Monday garbage for the 17th will be picked up on Tuesday. So you can put that on your calendar, your home listing. Council meeting tonight. And to keep in mind, if you're operating a business in Hamilton, it's time for your business renewals, for your license renewals for this year. And actually, should've been done by February 1st. So if the entity is helping us with our licensing, set it out on a postcard. A lot of people didn't realize what they got on their notifications. So those renewals don't soon be coming in prompt this year. So check and see if your business license has been properly renewed for the coming year. Before we really begin our official business of this meeting, I'd like for us to stand and have our dedication and then our pledge of allegiance. Father, we thank you that we can approach you tonight and ask your blessings upon our meeting. We thank you for opportunities to conduct the city's business. We thank you for each one that serves in the city government. I would ask you that you would be our guest and preside over the meeting tonight. Help us in all matters. It would be nice that you would be with the sickness epidemics that's raging in our world and in our communities, whether it be flu or the norovirus that's got everyone so upset in our world tonight. Or you could intervene in those matters and make it better. Father, we would always ask you to bless our soldiers and the pipe for our freedom. I hope our government in Washington will make good decisions to lead our nation and more. Always give you praise and thank you for all that you do for us. In the cross, man, pray.
Pledge allegiance to the flag and to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item one of our business tonight would be to approve the minutes of the January 21st council meeting. That was a Tuesday night meeting. And we'd ask for a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
We got a motion from Bobby. We need a second. Wade, second. All in favor of approving our minutes? Thank you. Next item is the approval of our council's failed deals for the month of January 2020. And we'd also need a motion for that matter. Motion to approve deals will need a second. Wade, second. All in favor of paying our January bills? Thank you. Item three is a recommendation to change the meeting for the next scheduled meeting of Monday the 17th to Tuesday, the 18th of February, due to the city hall being closed in observance of President's Day. And we'd need a motion to make that change.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Wade made a motion. We change our date. We need a second.
I'll say it.
Ten second. All in favor of making that meeting on the 18th? Item four is a recommendation to declare a proclamation February 23rd through February 29th as Arbor Day week in the city of Hamilton. The city of Hamilton for a number of years has been a tree city. And we'd like to make this Arbor Day proclamation official by motion and second to vote it into a proclamation for our city for those dates, February 23rd through 29th.
I'll make that motion.
Joe made the motion. We'll need a second.
I'll say it.
Second. We need to vote on that matter for declaring Arbor Day week. Thank you very much. Of course, the tree planting is important to our economy for better water and oxygen and air. It really helps our economic impact, our tourist attractions, property values, enhances our shopping areas. All these things are benefits from trees. And we'd ask you during this week to plant a tree or some trees in honor and recognition of Arbor Day week in Hamilton.
I don't want to cut down, sir.
Don't cut any down, but uh... Item five is the announcement of our hiring of Jay Howell as our new full-time firefighter for the Hamilton Fire Department. Jay has had his seat pack test and he's sent certifications as a volunteer, a fully trained volunteer firefighter. I saw his certifications. Think Jay will make us a good addition. You will have to go to the academy for your training. And we're going to recommend item six that would pay Jay 1475 per hour for this position. And we need a motion to set him as base cattle. Wade made a motion. We'll need a second.
Say it.
A second by Joe. And all in favor of that motion? Thank you very much.
How many people applied for that job?
I saw four applications. But I didn't interview all the people that applied.
And with the hiring of this man, we're going to be fully covered. We'll have no shifts with just one person and everything.
That's my understanding. We'll have two certified people at every shift.
Are we still going to work the 24-hour shift once this person is hired? Or is the scheduling going to change?
I'll have to visit the chief on that.
Who is this person?
Jay Howell.
Howell?
He's Monty Howell's son. Monty's a certified mechanic. He's worked in this area for several years. Jay has been in and around the fire department since he was 16 years old. He's 21 now. And he's proven out to be a top-notch interested person in firefighting. Item seven is the recommendation. If we want to have some discussion on this one before we vote, we can. I'm going to recommend to remove an addition to the employee's handbook that was added at the December 21st, 2015 council meeting that would require a city employee to pay for any additional testing if the employee did not pass on their first attempt. Due to testing for certification being required for certain positions for the city of Hamilton, in fairness to the employee who is being required to fulfill these obligations, the city will pay for additional tests if needed and remove the restriction of only allowing one attempt to pass the certification test. And I just found out how tough those tests are and the statistic on how many people go and pass, actually pass the test for the first try. So I'd like to see us take that one test only out of the handbook and allow additional testing to get these people certified for these jobs.
Now, are you wanting this to be retroactive since the city's already paid for two tests for two individuals? Or are you wanting this to go forward?
Well, actually, I didn't know it was in the handbook till it was shown to me that that was the case. I'd like to pay for these men who have just taken their test. That was their second attempt. And yeah, I guess I'm going to retro it.
Do you think this is fair to the men that passed it the first time? Since they didn't receive a bonus if we continue to pay for extra testing?
I'm not certain about fairness of the term. It's a good question.
I mean, the way this reads, it's just open-ended. However many tests it takes, that's what the city's going to pay for. But you know, we have had individuals that have passed it on the first attempt. So they're saving the city money and the other individuals are costing the city money. So I like it the way it is. But if everybody chooses to change it, I think there needs to be a limit on it. And there needs to be some consideration made for the individuals that pass it the first time. And if you're going to try to make it retroactive, then definitely you need to consider the individuals that have passed it the first time. And I've checked around. By no means am I saying that I could pass this test the first time, the second time, or the third time. But schoolteachers that are required to take the practices have to pay for their own testing. License nursing, licensing, healthy and licensing, practical nurses have to pay for their R and S. You know, different positions that require certification have to pay for their own testing. And the way it reads now, the city is paying one time. And the way you're wanting to do it, it's just, it's open-ended.
Well, how much is it? What does it cost to take the test? $325?
I think that's right.
$325?
Yes.
Well, if you're going to do this, I would recommend we pay for one more time and that's all. I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended.
You're saying pay for two tests?
First from the end, one time after that.
Well, if the individual passes the first time, are you going to give him the $325 as a bonus? Since you were willing to pay for the other man to take it twice?
No. That just apply there? No. So if he can pass it that first time, that's his good luck. But after the second time?
Well, that's their pay. They get better pay when they get certified. I think that's the bonus that they really perceive. They get to start reaping the benefits of passing that test immediately.
I'm thinking this is the way I'm looking at it. It gets rid of options. It's $325 to take that test when they're trying to get a job. And most of them are young people. They don't have that $325 anyway. So I say give them a second chance if they can't pass it the first time. If they can't pass it the second time, probably we really don't need them anyway.
The only thing by that time, he's already got a lot of time invested in that person. It takes like a, what, a year? A quarter, one year?
And that was sort of a traditional time. In addition to passing the test, they've got to have an apprenticeship. So $1,900, I believe is what Rodney told me it takes for his operators to be certified time-wise. And then they have to pass the test in addition to get their credentials to be a certified operator.
Well, do you want to just keep on paying for them to take the test? What I'm saying after two, we don't pay anymore. Then they don't want to take again. They have to pay the $325 something, Bobby. Your...
We have had a man have to go the fifth time, but he got certified and he's a good employee. He does his job well. But everybody don't test well. Open for them tests. But they can actually learn to do their job. And the state requires these certifications. And I don't know what's...
Yeah, they tell, tell...
I don't really know what's truly the right amount of attempts. I mean, I'm just laying this out. I think that one is just too restrictive. I'm okay about not leaving it open-ended. But I mean, I just feel like one is just really too restrictive. And like I say, this man's not achieved his top pay yet when he's trying to take this test. He don't get his real good pay until he gets certified. And a lot of times, they don't have that extra money to go pay for the test.
But just because he's certified, I mean, he doesn't top out once he's certified. It's a progression. I mean, he'll get an increase, but it's not like he's going to receive his top pay.
No, well, they will build top pay just to certify. That's correct.
I absolutely, I know these young people you're talking about. I didn't notice that much. But it's $325. You know, that's a good bit of money to give, come up with to get a job, you know? And if you don't pass the first time, the second, the third, and the fourth, there about the fourth time, you already got $1,500 to borrow.
The big concern from our standpoint, you've got that open-ended nature. You don't want to keep paying for somebody to take a test if they're going to pass. But I think it's what the mayor expressed was, I've got a lot of time from the city invested in employee to pay for a test. Maybe they've come up a little bit short. And we don't want to be in a situation where that employee goes, I ain't got that extra money. I don't know if I can pass it. So I'm just going to bow out. You know, we've got a lot of time invested in somebody. You know, we have to start that process over. And we have to have these operators and their few in between. As we've seen, other employees have been getting higher pay at a different city and leave because they're in demand. And that's what, sort of trying to juggle that balance of, we don't want to just keep paying for somebody just to go take a test that, you know, they might not pass. But we also don't want to just be so restricted. Somebody comes within a couple of points of passing the test, they may not have that extra $300 to go pay. So can we pay for another test or maybe three? And what's that line? I don't know. Like Mayor said, we had somebody that maybe took a few extra tests as a good employee. But we just don't want to invest 1,900 hours in somebody and have them run off, you know, and decide not to do this because they can't afford that.
Well, personally, maybe, I understand what you're saying. If you've got a good man, you want to try to hire. Maybe he can, he may be the best man you could hire and still he passes the test. Now, that's where you get in. So if you're talking about, I don't believe in giving them a test five times or something. But I will recommend that we give it to them three times. And after the third time, then they'd have to wait a year before they could try again. If they can't pass it three times. How long did they have to wait after the birth? Till next week there yet?
It was a late time. And then if you don't pass it the second time, you have to go back to school, which I was saying the city pays for schooling.
We try to have them get prepared early. And we actually, if they don't get their test passed, we actually offer some more hours of schooling before they go back and try to recertify.
But still, I mean, you're talking about giving them three chances and then you've got the individual that passed it the first time that's getting really no reward. Have we had somebody that passed it the first time?
He's getting a job.
Since 2015? No. Well, I don't know.
I didn't think so.
I don't know that we've tested since then.
Nobody's passed it the first time since 15.
I don't know how many would have tested since then. But I know that in the history of...
I'm sure there probably has been. But since that went into effect in December of 15, there's not been anybody that passed it the first time.
And the one man that was doing like his internship here, he, I mean, he wasn't even, as far as I know, employed. He was just doing it on his own. And he kind of took the test and was certified and just did like an internship for us.
Mr. Johnson, you've been around for a long time and bought on people and given them, you mean?
Gee, I'd rather not get into this.
Well, I didn't want to know what your thoughts were.
Well, I'd probably be a little bit biased, so I'd rather not.
Well, if you're biased, that's good. That's what I'm asking because I was a little biased, I guess, in saying, you know, that we, after one or two times, that we were paying...
Well, my son is involved.
I don't want to...
So I don't want to...
And you know, and it's...
I don't know that way.
The men that were hired were aware. I'm sure they were given a handbook when they were hired. They were aware that this was in there, that it wasn't a surprise to them. But I don't want to... I mean, it's in the handbook. So it was understood. So if you're trying to make it be retroactive, that's a whole other thing as far as I'm concerned because the individuals knew when they were hired, what was expected. If, and then you have to go forward if you're trying to lessen it. And the way it's written, it's open-ended. So you know, are you going to leave it open-ended? Or are you going to put a restriction on it? And then, you know, if you're changing everything and you are going to change it, then take into consideration the person that in the future might pass it on the first attempt. So I mean, there's more to consider than just what's written here, I think.
Since you asked me, Gene, I will make a comment.
Make it, I want to hear.
Okay. From what I've heard, there's about a 15% pass rate statewide on the test.
Okay.
So what is that? You know, very few people pass it the very first time. If you, if you do make it two times and then after the second time, they have to do, they have to pay for it yourself. And then maybe they have to pay for their own, if they have to go take extra classes. And I think that's right. After the second time, you have to go back, take some more classes, and then go get, try to pass the test again. I agree there ought to be a limit put on it. But talking about the handbook, I wonder how many people that are employed here have actually read through the handbook to know what's exactly in it. I know I still have to go back through it if something comes up to read what the handbook says. So you know, as far as them being aware, I don't know how, where they are. I know I'm not completely know everything that's in the handbook. And if, you know, if you come into the job expecting that probably not going to pass the test the first time. You know, you tell them it's a hard test and maybe 10% of them pass it the first time. Then they're really not expecting to pass it the first time. So you know, I think, you know, just paying them for 1,900 hours and if they pass, if they don't pass the test the first time, and you just pretty much, you've wasted 1,900 hours on somebody that a lot of instances just can't afford to take the test the second time. So they're gone and you've got to start the process all over again.
And you're losing a lot of good people.
Well, look, there's a lot of good people that...
That can't pass the test. Yes, that's what I'm...
They can do, they can do the job. But if you, if you sit them down at a computer and they have to take a test, you know, they just, they just have a hard time taking tests.
Right.
But again, I really...
It's hard to ask the question.
I'm good with whatever y'all...
Yeah, it's hard to know what to do, you know, because some of you best people probably couldn't pass the test.
That's right.
So that's where...
And they have to. I mean, they've got to pass that test or they can't work.
Right. I don't know.
I don't either.
I don't believe it.
But I do think just giving them one chance is...
That's not enough, no.
It'd be different if it was 50%, the people pass it the first time. But when you get down to 10% or 15%?
Well, how many passes? Do you not have any added the second and third times?
I don't know. I don't know.
Well, that was the reason I recommended to begin with that we give them, we pay for the first two times and then if they take it the third time, they pay for it, you know? Or if everybody wants to pay for the first three times? I'm not against it, you know? I don't know. I probably couldn't pass the first three times, so I'm not going.
I'm okay about not leaving it open-ended. But I'd like to be able to offer our employees that we thought enough to hire to attempt it more than one time of the city paying for it. If I really thought these people weren't trying to get their certification, I'd be disgruntled enough to say, you know, something to them about it. But I think that they're all trying when they go to pass these tests. I don't think they want to come home and say, I didn't pass.
And they probably learn a little bit more every time they take it, you know, more than the next time. It's easier and it probably can get easier enough to pass it.
Probably still, it's harder.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to make a motion that we pay for three times. If we have to, if he's good enough that you want to hire, if it's, if he's... If we have to, if it's good enough that you want to hire, if it's, if these, I mean, the people whoever's trying to hire knows whether they want to try to get hired, to work for them, that we will go three times, if it's recommended by whoever's hiring. You understand what I'm saying? At least, at least with everybody, whoever's hiring, whoever, Black Mike, whoever, you know, is hiring anyone, they, if they would think that we mostly worked hard enough, we would pay for three times.
Does everyone understand the nature of this motion? Well, I don't know.
That's heavy there about to... If they pass it the first time, it's going to be...
He said nothing.
Congratulations. You just don't have to pay it three more times. You heard 15 cents on the price the first time.
They do immediately get a, a markup on their hours, but they don't get a top pay just for passing it, but they immediately start making better wages. They're held down until they do get their credentials.
Well, really, we're not going to be able to hire anybody if we don't do something. Nobody passes it, do, the first time. And if they have to pay $300 something dollars, that's another. I'd say four times. Make it four times. I think they'd be enough if they're going to make it, I mean, you know? I know if they're going to make it, they're making three times, because they'll start studying really hard for that third time. If you do it four times, you're talking about, what, 320?
325 per test.
So you're going to have nearly $1,500 for that test, for that, for that.
Well, thanks, Angela said this is the first time they've had anybody attempt to take a test since 2015. So if it's ever five years, four or five years before you even have a possibility of taking, you know?
They're not going to look much money on it.
Well, I mean...
That much, and you being hired?
Right.
Well, I don't know. If that's got better than Angela, I'd go along with the majority.
What do you think, Pam?
I don't want to say too much because I almost called somebody's name, so I'm just going to be quiet. Y'all just make your motions now, though.
Do we have a second, Mr. Speaker? There's a motion on the table. Is that correct, Scott? Do we have a motion?
Mr. Speaker, you submitted a motion and the mayor, uh, chairman is basically to now amend our, uh, the handbook to allow for three, three tests. The city will pay for three tests.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. At this point, I'm going, I'm just going to call it to a vote. And that'll be that the city would incur the expense of at least three tests. Pass the three, it's going to be on the employee to pay for their own test if they didn't pass it the first three tries. All those in favor of that motion? All, all opposed? Three and three.
All right, I want to hear what y'all guys think. Since y'all are against that, tell us what, what you personally think. It's, it's, it's stretched out so either way, you got a bump, quite a bit into it anyway, so... Well, even the three, they, they just have to start paying. They're not still right out of the deal if they want to do it three, they don't want to pay for the fours for their own job, but... But I'll go along with that if that's what y'all want to do.
Do we have to wait till another meeting to bring this back to a hundred vote? We've got a motion on the floor now to pay for four tests before we start paying. Do we have a second to that motion? You make the motion. Do we have a second?
Turn me off.
Do we have a second to that motion?
She's a little undecided, boy. I don't believe we can... I wouldn't be excited with my neighbor.
Well, that one doesn't get a second. Herb, what's your motion?
I'm just so undecided, I can't motion right now. What if we table this to the next meeting?
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, nobody's thinking about it.
Do we have a motion to table this matter to the sec, to the coming meeting?
I'll make that motion. I'll say it.
All in favor of making another stab at it at the next meeting?
Have somebody come up before the next meeting and they have a great one.
Let us, um, I'll try to do an inquiry. I know of some towns nearby that have sent some people there at times, and we're trying to get people to pass for water operators. And I'll, I'll be able to talk and find out what they do, and I'll look for it back in the workshop. Uh, that's all the business I had tonight. Is there any other business?
Yes, I've been working on this water. I told you in the work session that I would have a proposal by Thursday, but I work on this after hours and on weekends, and when I can call and ask people my questions, it's usually the next day after I have a question. And, uh, my first question was the formula that was used to come up with these current rates, or current charges. And, uh, the city accountant and the water department head said that they knew of no formula. So I don't know where these current charges came from, but I am working, I've been working, and I had some more questions today, and the girls downstairs have helped me, and I am working on a proposal. I don't know if y'all have been looking into this or not, but, uh, definitely we're going to have to go up and we're going to have to make some changes. But we're also going to have to, I think, make some changes in, um, in maybe following through and running our cutoff list every month when you're, I mean, every month, whoever's two months behind, if that's what the policy is, we've got to cut them off. We can't be holding this list for four months and then coming back. We have got to run the cutoff list. And, uh, maybe we could have some type of, of an agreement with the housing authority that when their, um, tenants move out, that they notify us? Or maybe even we should go up on our deposit for rental properties? And that way, if they do move out owing us a substantial amount, at least we will have more of a deposit. But I do think we need to look into the amount of deposit that we're requiring for the rental properties and focus on our cutoff list and, and our back debts. And, uh, like I said, I've, I've been looking at these numbers and I've been trying to, I've been trying to, to come up with something that's, you know, it was suggested to go up on the sewer, uh, instead of 50%, 100%. But by doing that to the residential customers, I mean, they're sort of going to get hit twice because when our businesses go up and turn, they're going to turn around and, and pass that cost to the residents. So, you know, you sort of have to look at it because you don't want to hit everybody, you don't want to hit the residents, you know, with just a, a huge increase all at one time. But, uh, but I do think we're going to have to look at more than just the numbers. We're going to have to look at the policy and enforcing the policy and the leak adjustments. I mean, I really don't know what the criteria is to get a leak adjustment. Uh, I'm under the impression that we're handing out a lot of adjustments, and, uh, I think that's something that we probably need to look into also is, is exactly what the policy is for requesting one and it being granted. So, and definitely if we're going to continue with that, to keep up with it and make sure you know that you're only allowed one per year. And, uh, and maybe adjust the amount that we adjust the, the total bill when that is granted. But, uh, but I am working on this, and if any of y'all have been working on it and you have any suggestions, I'm all up for looking.
I met Rodney today, and we were planning another meeting with him and Allen, and I'd like to probably just bring him back to our workshop so everybody can hear it. There's room for a good deal more discussion, Tammy, and if you're making some good points, we will cover those. And if the tax policy adjustments to make four, I'm all for that, too.
Definitely the numbers are going to have to be adjusted, but I, but I do think, you know, the policy is going to have to be adjusted. And maybe Scott can explain where we came up with this decreasing charge for the more amount of water you use, the less it costs, when we're charging just a fraction of what it costs to produce. I mean, we're not even breaking even on, on what we charge when you go over a, a certain number of gallons. So I, I, I don't know where all this came from, and I really don't understand why it was done like that. So what do you think, Rodney?
Rodney, Scott, obviously shared the main on that today, and, uh, on the per ga, uh, per thousand gallons at the reduced price where we don't cover our cost of production.
Right, because on, on one bill that I figured, we lost over $600 on one bill, because we're, we're not even charging what it costs for us to produce the water.
That's, uh, that's, that's got to stop. We, the numbers bear out the, the problems, and, uh, like I say, some of it is going to have to do with policy, policy formula and, uh, our bottom line. It's all going to come into focus before we get it fixed. And we're going to have another full workshop on, uh, water and wastewater rates, and, uh, we'll have more explanations of where those formulas came from. Uh, our bulk water, uh, home supply water, the statin will be at a different rate because we don't maintain lines and meters and what have you for those customers. And we can do that for less money, but our residential business, uh, have got to be adjusted. And, uh, we'll, we'll really, uh, get into this at our next workshop so everybody has a clear picture of where we're trying to go. And it just goes without saying tonight...
And our sewer rates, too. Our sewer rates are awful. I mean, we're giving everybody, I mean, 50% on that of what we're charging, but they can't...
Realizing money about the expenses, yeah. I think we've been a healthy exercise. It's, it's going to cost, uh, some to make these adjustments. Uh, for people using minimal amounts of water, it's not going to be a tremendous burden for them, but for our heavy users, it's going to be a little more painful, you know, as far as increases. I noticed today my cable bill was $81.30 for TV service. My water bill was $41. I'm paid twice as much for TV cables. I have a necessity in my house.
And that wasn't just your water, that was garbage, too.
Garbage and water.
And I put it also in my wallet.
And I paid $81 for a picture that breaks up in front of my eyes almost every night. And, you know, and...
You don't need to be watching it, Chris, but you're going to need that to move.
I do. That's the point, Gene. That is the point. I think we'd have to motion to a term.
How many times?
Time we made a motion, I'm going to ask for a second on that motion. It's what I'm going to say. And I'm, I'm for a term. I hope everyone is. And that's all, vote for a term. Thank you. Since the meeting was deteriorated.
They're losing control.